Good evening and welcome, everyone. My name is Karen Flanagan and I'm the school district clerk. At this time, I'd like to bring the annual reorganizational meeting of the Rush Henrietta Central School District Board of Education to order and ask that everyone who is willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll begin with introductions with Ms. Wilson and ask that everyone follow in accordance with your seat at the board table. Hopefully, it works.
Good evening. Dina Wilson, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction.
Good evening. Pat McHugh, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and School Accountability.
Hi, Anne Marie Strazinski, board member.
James O'Brien, board member.
George De Marto, attorney for the district.
Go ahead, Nikki.
Good evening. Nikki Laplaca, board member.
Good evening. Beau Wright, superintendent of schools.
Good evening. Jennifer Laird, board member.
Good evening. May Abdullah, board member.
Karen Flanagan, school district clerk.
Good evening. Diane McBride, board member.
Good evening.
Go ahead, Doug.
I think you did.
Good evening. Nellana Salam, Assistant Superintendent of Student and Family Services.
Good evening. Andy Whitmore, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations.
Thank you, everyone. Our next agenda item is our school attorney. George De Marto will administer the oath of office to Jennifer Laird, Diane McBride, and Doug Wright Rivers, I'm sorry, all who were recently re-elected to the Board of Education.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Because you've all actually taken the oath before, there's no need to re-sign the book. This is largely for ceremonial purposes and to keep the agenda in order since it's part of public policy. So, I see no reason why we can't do this in a group, so I will ask the three elected board members to please raise their right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Diane E. McBride.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of member of the Board of Education of the Rush Henrietta Central School District.
Of member of the Board of Education of the Rush Henrietta School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Agenda item number four is the election of the Board of Education President. The process explanation is, I will ask if there are any nominations for Board President, and the response should be, yes, I'd like to nominate. So with further ado, are there any nominations for Board President?
I would like to nominate Diane McBride for Board President.
Are there any other nominations?
I think Diane's screen is frozen.
She's moving on mine.
Looks good here.
Okay, I have a nomination for Diane McBride for Board President, although a second nomination is not needed. Is anyone like to second the nomination?
I'll second.
Nikki, I'm sorry. Okay. Mrs. McBride is elected to the position of Board President by a vote of, oh, sorry, everybody needs to vote, I'm sorry, by a show of hands? Okay. Mrs. McBride is now our Board President by a vote of seven to zero. Congratulations, and I usually would say, please assume your position at the board table, but we're just gonna go with it from here.
I'll ask Diane McBride to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I and state your name.
I, Diane E. McBride.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of President of the Board of Education of the Rush Henrietta Central School District.
Of President of the Board of Education of the Rush Henrietta Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. For the record, he's moving over so I can sign the book. Thank you. All right. So I do have a little hum in my headset, so we'll see how this goes. The next item on our agenda will be the election of our Board of Education Vice President, and I'm looking to see if there are any nominations for that position.
I nominate Anne Marie Strazinski for Vice President.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? All right. See, there are no other nominations. We don't need a second, but would someone like to second that nomination? Someone wants to second it?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Nikki. By a show of hands, all in favor? Okay, any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
I and state your name.
I, Anne Marie Strazinski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Vice President of the Board of Education of the Rush Henrietta Central School District.
Of Vice President of the Board of Education of the Rush Henrietta Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. I'd like to take a moment to thank Jennifer and May for their leadership for the last six, seven months, as we've gone through some changes with Bob Cook taking on that position of judgeship in the town of Henrietta, so thank you for your leadership. All right. This brings us into the organizational meeting, item number six, the adoption of the agenda, which is Policy 2210. You have a motion to affirm the agenda by Jennifer, second by Nikki. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right. The next item on the agenda is the appointment and designation of salaries and fees, if there are any, of district officers. That's items seven A through M. I'll take a motion by Nikki, second by Jennifer. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All right. Motion carry, any opposed, sorry. Motion carries seven to zero. Next is item eight, and that would be the appointment and designation of salaries or fees, if any, of school district positions, advisors, and firms. That is items AA through Q. Can I have a motion, please? Anne Marie, I'll take a second. Nikki, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The next item is nine, the resolution of bonding personnel. Items A through, let me flip my page, A through E. Can I have a motion, please? All right, Nikki, a second by Jennifer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's carried seven to zero. It's helpful, too, if somebody puts their hand up, you're gonna make the motion so I can see everybody. Some of you are a little cut off, so, for me, thank you. Item 10, the resolution of designating depositories. It's 10A through I. A motion to accept. Jennifer, a second. May, all right, any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. Any opposed? Seven to zero. Item 11 is the resolution of designating depositories for school funds. That's A through W. I'll take a motion, please. All right, Jennifer, and a second. Anne Marie, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. All right, any opposed? Item carries seven to zero. We are at Resolutions Establishing Petty Cash Funds, item 12A through E. I'll take a motion. May, James is the second. We have May's calling it, James second. Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. Item carries seven to zero. Brings us to 13, the Authorization for Other Financial Matters. That is A through P. Take a motion. Jennifer, and a second by Nikki. Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand. It carries seven to zero. All right. District Designations, item 14, A through J. I will take a motion to accept. May, second by Doug. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Item 15, miscellaneous items regarding to memberships in different organizations and different fee schedules, and that's 15A through P. I'll take a motion. Nikki, and a second by James. Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries seven to zero. This brings us to Board Appointments. This is A through E, and I'd like to take a moment for the item on number E, where is the Board Liaison section. There were a couple spots that were, there was a blank, and then I just wanted to clarify some people on one spot, so. Is everyone comfortable with their school liaison positions for all the different schools? Okay, good. The district committees and groups, everyone is good in their place, still listed there? All right, it's on the back page.
Diane?
Yes.
Sorry, we're looking at the Sports Booster Club. That was left blank.
Oh, I apologize. Sports Booster Club. Did we have somebody doing that before? Do they not, I'm not interested in doing that right now, which is fine, we can get someone else.
Sorry, I'm on mute. I was doing sports boosters. I'm gonna have some conflicts on Monday nights, though, which is when they meet, and so I apologize for not talking about that with anybody ahead of time.
No, and it's not a problem, not a problem. I would step into it, but I know Rompa meets on Monday nights, same Monday nights as Sports Booster, so that would be impossible for me to do. So they meet usually first or second Monday of the month, I believe. So is anybody interested in that, or people want to think about it, and we can come back and fill that in later if it's necessary? Okay, looks like we need to come back to that one. We can approve everything else except that one, so folks can look at their schedules and see if they can facilitate in that area. I wanted to point out under Finance and Audit Committee that Nicole Laplaca will now be the Chair of that group as president. I can't be Chair of that group, so she's gonna be the Chair of the Finance and Audit. I'm looking at the policy, and usually the president sits as Chair, so there would be Jennifer, James, Doug, and myself, and we should really have three, so as Chair, I'm looking to see what other two folks really want to stay on that committee.
I don't mind staying on it.
You want to stay on it? Okay.
As long as the time is meeting still in the morning, yeah, that would work my new schedule.
Okay. Are you good, James, to stay on? Or it looks like we also had Doug, so, all right.
I'm good unless Doug feels an overwhelming desire to.
Okay, so it sounds like we're agreeing to, as president, then James and Jennifer on the policy. Everybody's good with that? Okay, great. On our sheet, we've eliminated the Alma Gordon Scholarship selection by the full board because there's no money in that account, and under the Godfrey Jacobson Memorial Scholarship, there is some money left in the account, so we'll leave that as the Board President. All right. And then, everybody's good with the rest of those places, associations, and different groups they're representing on that page? Jennifer, is Legislative still good for you?
I can't meet during the day, so.
All right, then I would be happy to take that if no one else wants it. All right. And are you okay with the advocacy being the advocacy liaison, or do you need to step away from that?
The advocacy, yeah, probably step away from that as well.
Okay. That would be another one that would be available for someone. If someone's not ready to step up for that tonight, we can come back to that one as well. Do you really know how much work there is for that?
There's not much work for that one.
Then I could do it if other folks are not interested. Okay.
When do they meet?
I'm sorry, who was that?
It's Nikki. When do they meet?
It's not so much that they meet, as information comes to you and you advocate on behalf of the school district, as my understanding is correct, Jennifer, that that's what they still do.
I can let you do that, Diane.
All right, all right. And finding out that we are having a virtual business meeting in October, I will still continue to be the voting delegate for folks if, unless somebody else wants to be the voting delegate. So we will vote on everything except the Sports Booster Club representative while folks look at whether they can fit that into their schedule. So I will take a motion, then, to approve all those items except Sports Booster Club representative, A through E. I'll take a motion. Nikki, second by James. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Great. All right. This brings us to the adjournment of our reorganizational meeting, and if everybody is comfortable, we can move right into the regular board meeting, or do we need a break? I'm sorry, thank you, George. I'll need a motion for that adjournment. Nikki, then Jennifer, all in favor? All right, so that carries seven to zero. All right, then I guess we'll just move right into our regular business meeting. Normally, we would call the meeting back to order, and it looks like, by my watch, 6:19 PM. And there are any changes to the agenda, anybody? Okay. Any announcements from anyone? All right. So bringing us then to the public forum, and in pursuit to the Governor's executive order 202.1, there'll be no in-person attendance at any regular or special board meeting of the Rush Henrietta Board of Education until further notice. To address the board regarding public forum items, items not on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda later, please submit statements or questions to the school district clerk Karen Flanagan at kflanigan@rhnet.org. All right. This moves us to consent agenda items for routine matters. That's 4A through E. I'll take a motion. James. First by Jennifer, second by James. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. This brings us to our Personnel Actions, and I'll take a motion to accept those. May, James is second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Brings us to item six, our Safe Schools Against Violence in Education. This is our Code of Conduct, our District Safety Plan, and our attendance policy. And I'll take a motion to the approval of all three of those. We reviewed those at our last meeting. James, and a second by Nikki. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. This brings us to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Diane. Good evening, everyone. There was one item that was submitted as a written report, and that is the corporal punishment report for the second semester. There were no incidents reported. Are there any questions on that particular item?
No.
Okay, then we will move into oral information. I just wanted to make the board aware that we did receive.
Oh, excuse me, there's also the extra activities report that was included.
Okay. Are there any questions on the extra activities report?
No.
Okay. Then we'll proceed with oral information. Thank you, Karen, for keeping me honest. We did receive a favorable decision on an appeal related to transportation to a private school, in which we denied due to a scheduling conflict. I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of this decision, which came to us recently. We had a, this was obviously an incredibly difficult school year, but I want to commend everyone in the district for the work that they did getting us through the past few months and closing out the school year, and I especially wanted to highlight all those folks who helped us plan and execute the senior days in the last couple weeks of the school year, which culminated with some really beautiful graduation ceremonies. Principal Tim Schaefer, Assistant Principal, now Principal Leary, Dina Stathopoulos, the other assistant principals at the high school, Megan Dank and Todd Russo, our community relations team, Travis Anderson and Heather Campo, Grace Lee, Martha Mack at the high school, Derek Brown, who heads up our grounds crew, Ken Nelson, Lee Heberger, all the youth assistance teachers and security personnel who helped to keep order on that day. There were so many folks who contributed, and the ceremonies were beautiful, and, you know, we wanted to send our seniors off the right way and ensure that, you know, we had a truly meaningful celebration, and I think that we accomplished that and then some. So, kudos to every single person. You know, I didn't name everyone, but to everyone who helped us to get through graduation and to provide those beautiful ceremonies to our seniors, thank you, thank you, thank you, is all I can say. I also want to give a shout out to Geraldo Torres and the folks from Food Service.
Absolutely.
Who continue to do outstanding work in terms of feeding our families within the community. From within the first few days of school closure, they had feeding sites up and running at the high school and four other locations around the community. They continue to feed our students. You know, we serve still anywhere from 700 to 1,000 meals a day. There have been days where we served more than 1,400 meals, and I think, you know, if you count from closure through now, we've probably served more than 160,000 meals. So, that's pretty remarkable. So I just want to give a shout out to Geraldo and his team because they've been nothing short of outstanding from the very beginning, and I think it's important that we recognize them as well. You know, like I said, sometimes a crisis brings out the best in us, and I can say that it really brought our team closer together, and folks have done great work under really difficult circumstances over the course of the past few months, so I just want to thank everybody, yeah.
Could I just go in there? Geraldo and his team did a great job, and they were joined by the head bus drivers, who every day were out there helping deliver the food, so they were right in there as well. It was a great team effort. They all worked very, very hard. So head bus drivers, as well as the food services folks.
Thank you for adding them in. Like I said, that's always the risk you run when you start naming folks, is that you leave somebody off who deserves recognition, and, you know, I said, as we were recognizing the folks from the high school, there were so many people that I didn't name that helped behind the scenes to help us have a successful end to the school year, and so I think it's important that we recognize that, under very difficult circumstances, we can be very proud of our Rush Henrietta team. You know, right now, our focus is on what we need to do to reopen school. We did get some long-awaited guidance yesterday from the governor during his update, so what we know now is the schools that are in Phase Four and have a daily infection threshold of 5% or less will be able to open. We know that there are gonna be some requirements around masking. Looks like those requirements will be a little bit more reasonable, and we saw an initial guidance, so that's a good thing. We know that, right now, that there's gonna be the six-foot rule in terms of physical distancing, so that will present a challenge, but we are, we've already started to look at what we need to do to implement those guidelines and adhere to the requirements around distancing. We know that there'll be requirements related to cleaning and disinfecting, and Andy and his crew have already been working on that, and we, you know, there's, we're still awaiting some information regarding health screening and what that's gonna mean and what that's gonna entail on a daily basis. So more information to follow. Our task force already met once, and will be meeting again on Thursday. That's a relatively large group of approximately 40 people, so we're gonna be starting the meeting in breakout groups around specific areas pertaining to reopening, and then coming together as a larger group for the last 45 minutes or so of a meeting to debrief and talk about next steps. We are relatively certain that districts are gonna be required to submit plans for reopening to the state at the end of the month, and then final guidance from the governor in that first week in August, by August 7. So that's where we stand right now. That's where we're focusing the bulk of our energy. This was a very unusual year, 2019, 2020, to put it mildly, and I expect that, you know, the upcoming school year is gonna be highly unusual as well. I think we just have to resign ourselves to the fact that it's gonna be very different, and we're gonna be building as we're flying, and we, I think we've all become a little bit more comfortable being uncomfortable, and that's the way that it's gonna be, but I feel, I feel confident because of the people that we have here in the district, their hard work, their dedication, their skill set. I know that we'll be ready for whatever comes. So that concludes the Superintendent's Report. I open it up for questions and comments. So that concludes the superintendent's report, I open it up for questions and comments.
Anyone? I would concur that the teams have done amazing things since March, right on through the summer with graduation and food distribution, so again, kudos to all those folks. Alright. Anything else for the superintendent? Alright, that brings us to item eight, new business, our board budget quarterly report. Everybody had a chance to review that. Any questions regarding it?
I just have a quick question, are we going to get reimbursed for the NISBA conference that we signed up for? And it was, I think it was officially canceled, correct Karen?
You're muted Karen.
You are correct Nikki, do you mean no reimbursement as far as the money the district paid for registration?
Yes.
Yeah, that's already been taken care of, they already, they already were gonna refund that kind of money.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Good question. Alright. That brings us to Board Member Reports, which would be the Equity Inclusion Steering Committee. May, were you there as well? Do you want to say anything regarding that?
It was a chance for group members, the committee members, to reflect on the two-year journey they've been through in terms of personal growth and the, the work there we embarked on. And we took a survey. People were, had a chance to answer questions and rate other people's answers. So it was, it was a chance for us to share how we when we started our feelings towards, okay, this is something we need to do, the district's going to do, the district commitment to it, and our part, what we, our roles in this journey. So it was a, it was a great meeting, and I, people are energized to continue the work, and the consultants were there from U of R, so they, they took our feedback, and we're excited for the next year. And, and I think we had the chance to actually hear from people, the things that not only the committee came up with, but their own journey themselves, what they did in terms of developing things they can do on their own, and share with colleagues in different buildings. So it was a great meeting.
There was the realization by folks there that we don't have to wait for a report to be finished, that people can continue doing the small things that they are doing to grow and, and make it into a bigger, bigger connection. So, looking forward to September with getting back to work and the report, and having a chance to report out to the board. Pat, do you want to add anything to that, or do we have everything pretty much, the highlights?
I think you guys covered it very well. Thanks, Nerlan, anything?
Alright. It's a very passionate group, I love it. Alright. This brings us to item ten, is our anticipated executive session to discuss contract negotiations with the REJ Coalition, Coalition Unit, administrative vacancies, and a board member of Board of Education personnel matter. Can I have a motion to enter executive session? Nikki and a second by Jennifer. All in favor? Any opposed? Alright, carries seven zero, we are going into executive session. I'll wait for the record to stop. Alright, we've returned to the meeting. We are at the close of our meeting, this would be our board meeting recap and any previews. I did not invite Bo back, because there's no need for him to return to this portion of the meeting, so.
Alright, all resolutions passed, we're going to check our schedules to see who may become the liaison for the sports boosters, we'll meet on Monday nights. And guidance has come out regarding school opening in the fall, and Bo and his task force will be meeting to determine the steps for successful reopening. And we have a meeting next Tuesday at six PM for George and the board. And that is it.
Alright, great. I'll take a motion then to adjourn. I have Jennifer, second by May, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright everyone, thank you for a great meeting. We'll see you next week at six, six o'clock.
At the, at the Parker Building, correct?
At the Parker Building, and George will be sending us an email.